Let the record reflect, we are reconvening with all members present. Please rise for the plate.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a motion for the minutes, the decade of minutes of July 23rd.
I move that.
Second. We've had discussion, roll call vote please.
Mrs. Tsukamoto.
Yes.
Dr. Esposito.
Yes.
Mr. Links.
Ah.
Mr. Catalonello.
I abstain.
Mr. Landrigan.
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale.
I abstain.
I may have a motion for the regular minutes of July 23rd, 2012.
I move that.
Second. Discussion? Okay, roll call vote.
Mrs. Tsukamoto.
Yes.
Dr. Esposito.
Yes.
Mr. Links.
Ah.
Mr. Catalonello.
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan.
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale.
I abstain.
Welcome, everyone, and a couple of greeting announcements, and then I'm gonna come down below and we're gonna take care of some business. First, I want to introduce Bruce Padula, who is filling in for Matt Giacobi tonight, so thank you Bruce for pinching him.
You're welcome.
A reminder for our regular attendees that instead of second Monday next month, we'll be meeting November 5th, which is two weeks from today, but due to the November 12th observation of Veterans Day and being a holiday, and we could not push it back to that Wednesday, we'll be meeting a week early. I also want to welcome Midori Tagawa. You want to just stand up a second and say hello? So for those that were here at the town hall meeting, you met Midori already. She is a student at Drew University and also one of their civic scholars, and so I met her initially on the Drew tours, and then Bob and I met her when we met the civic scholars, and she expressed an interest in local government. She's originally from Japan and, as I mentioned now, a freshman at Drew, and we were given a full immersion into the life of borough government, including attending a staff meeting this morning, so Midori, welcome and thank you for all your help.
Thank you so much.
And somewhat related to civic engagement, I was a guest lecturer this week, or last week rather, at Fairleigh Dickinson University on a topic, it was a class on government and civic engagement, and they wanted to learn the life of a local mayor, and what my typical day is like, and how I got there, so four hours later, no, it was a very fun thing to do, and I think will be, and I invited them to also take steps such as Midori has and to get involved, so hopefully this will be the start of a great relationship with our local universities to engage our young students to a life of civic engagement. And some of you may be sitting a little higher than you normally do, hopefully you moved the bags before you sat down in your seats, but that was just a subtle reminder that this week we're starting a leaf collection, but the best way to do it is to use these bags, so if you don't take these just for the heck of it, but if you're gonna use them to fill them up with your leaves, please do so. It was suggested that we do this as a reward for those that are missing the debates tonight, but that probably could lead to all sorts of jokes, so we're not even gonna go there. So anyway, a reminder, there are two ways to get rid of your leaves, fill the bags or put them at the curb, and it is far better to fill the bags because it's, our manpower can be used for other things than collecting the leaves, and also it's far better storm order management to have leaves in bags and/or cans and have them picked up by the trucks. For those that missed the library strategic plan presentation last Thursday, the plan is now posted on the web at MadisonNJLibrary.org, and copies are available at their desk, so please take a look at it, it is a very impressive plan, and a lot of work was put in by many people. And to highlight something else is, we've received a $23,000 recycling grant through the help of our, the many titles that Jim has, one is recycling director, so the reimbursement for our great effort for recycling in Madison, and that will go a long ways to help us out. This past Saturday at the 49 Acres, we had a, quite an activity going on across the road while the fields were packed full of football players and soccer players, we had scouts across the way, and cadets from West Point. The scouts part of Joseph Falco's Eagle Scout project, which was including putting in trails, and there's gonna be additional signage, maps, tree identification, will be coming in the coming months, but we had 24 cadets from West Point, as I mentioned, including Juliana Lynch, who is a daughter of Nancy Lynch of the Presbyterian Church, and it's pretty amazing to see, you know, these people that are serving our country willing to also come by and serve Madison and talk about hard workers, it was incredible the amount of work they were doing. And also special thanks to Paul Alaco, Parks Advisory Committee, I also saw Kathy Cultis, who was not only working but taking pictures, and also, not to be forgotten, working hard and shoveling the wood chips was Mayor Holden, so she was a part of the crew. And you'll, you notice quite a group in the back of the room, and we'll be getting to them fairly shortly. It is a big night for the police department, we'll be swearing in our new patrol officer, Stephanie Cararo, and she'll be a second female officer, and she was very happy to accept the position in Madison, and we're looking forward to hitting the streets, literally. And also, we'll be passing several resolutions for promoting Sergeant Joseph Cirillo and Sergeant Dennis Lamb to the positions of acting lieutenants, effective immediately, and also promoting Sean Plumstead and Craig Corelli to acting sergeants, and this comes from the recommendation from both outgoing acting chief Jerry Mantone and our current acting chief Darren Datchison, and certainly recognizes the fact that we need to make sure we have the leadership tools in place so we can deliver the best possible public safety in this town. And somewhat related to that, we are working on the promotional ordinance, and I want to thank Chairwoman Carmela Vitale for leading the committee along with Council President and Public Safety Liaise on Jeanne Tsukamoto and Bob Landrigan for working so hard on this ordinance, and that will be introduced at the next meeting. And, before I come down below, and then I'm gonna do a resolution, and then we'll get to our introductions of the various resolutions, I also want to share a picture. At the last council meeting, I talked about a trip that Carmela Vitale and Bob Landrigan and I made to Trenton along with Ray Cody to talk about Green Acres funding, and also the bill that would exempt local universities from local control, and so there was, Myla Jacy, our Assemblywoman, met with us along with John McKeon, and so there's a picture just in case you wanted proof that we were actually there. It was a very fruitful meeting.
Mayor, how about we move the resolution to do that?
Uh, I'm gonna do a couple of, uh...
Other things first?
Yes, other things first, and then we'll move to that. What's the number for the, what's the number for the Hall of Fame? 260. 260. 260. Is Dennis Falco here? Dennis? Come on up, Dennis. While Dennis is coming up, how many people were able to walk in the TJ Martel Walkathon this year? Okay, we've got a few in the audience. For those that were there, you were able to meet someone, Bob Brown, who is a very inspirational speaker, very inspirational story, and he has got a rare, very rare story in the fact that he is a survivor of pancreatic cancer, and that, as Dennis knows, that is not often the case. And here I have a proclamation recognizing pancreatic cancer awareness month. Whereas in 2012, an estimated 43,920 people will be diagnosed with pancreatic cancer in the United States, 37,000 will die from the disease. Whereas pancreatic cancer is one of the deadliest cancers and is the fourth leading cause of cancer death in the United States, and is the only major cancer with a five-year relative survival rate in single digits at just 6%. And whereas, when symptoms of pancreatic cancer present themselves, it is usually too late for optimistic prognosis, and 74% of pancreatic cancers die within the first year of their diagnosis, while 94% die within the first five years. And whereas, of all racial, ethnic groups in the United States, African Americans have the highest incidence of pancreatic cancer between 34 and 70% higher than other groups. And whereas, approximately 1,100 deaths will occur in New Jersey in 2012, and whereas there is no cure for pancreatic cancer, there have been no significant, and there have been no significant improvements in the survival rates in the last 40 years. Whereas the federal government invests significantly less money in pancreatic cancer research than it does in any of the leading cancer killers, and pancreatic cancer research constitutes only approximately 2% of National Cancer Institute federal research funding, a figure far too low given the severity of the disease, its mortality rate, and how little is known on how to arrest it. And whereas, the Pancreatic Cancer Action Network is the first and only national patient advocacy organization that serves the pancreatic cancer community in the borough of Madison and nationwide by focusing its efforts on the public policy research funding, patient services, and public awareness, and educational, education related to developing effective treatments and cure for pancreatic cancer. And whereas, the Pancreatic Cancer Action Network and its affiliates in the borough of Madison support those patients currently battling pancreatic cancer, as well as those who have lost their lives to the disease and committed to nothing less than a cure. And whereas, the good health and well-being of the residents of the borough of Madison are enhanced as a direct result of increased awareness about pancreatic cancer and the research into early detection, causes, and effective treatments. Now therefore I, Robert H. Conley, the mayor of the borough of Madison, on behalf of the governing body, proclaim, proclaim the month of November 2012 as Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month in the borough of Madison.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, and distinguished guests. On behalf of the North, Northern New Jersey Pancreatic Cancer Action Network, we'd like to thank you for this important contribution to this national fight against pancreatic cancer. I lost my beloved Rosalie five years ago to this disease, and my grandfather 50 years ago. I joined this group to try to make a difference, helping their main goal, try and find a cure. Thank you again for supporting our cause and helping raise awareness of pancreatic cancer. We hope you all support our upcoming event we're having, a walk and a run on Sunday, November 4th, at the Black Cow Center in Porziponing. More information, you can find on our website, packhand.org, or purplestripe, which the event is called, dot org. Thank you again.
Thank you, Claire.
Thanks.
So does anyone here remember what you were doing a year ago this coming weekend? You look like, you might be, look like you're in the dark, not to, not to make light of it, but it was one year ago, a day that, we started off just early winter, I think most of you approached it the same way I did that morning, as this is gonna be a minor inconvenience, and then all of a sudden the snow, the rain turned to snow a whole lot earlier than it should have, with all the leaves still on the trees, and that day changed drastically. We could have never anticipated the impact, and it was far different than like a Hurricane Irene where you can get ready for it, the forecast calls in weeks ahead, not weeks ahead, but days ahead, and you prepare, but still, we were ready. And I want to call Bob Landrigan up here, and Darren Datchison, also up, acting chief Darren Datchison. These are our chair and vice chair of our emergency management committee. This is the brain trust that gets us ready for emergencies, and one of the things is you set plans and you hope you never have to use them, and then you have plans and sometimes they change when it snows in October. So long after we were recovered from this storm, the trees were cleaned up, the power was back on, the work was not ended because the borough of Madison was out a substantial amount of money. It was good news that we had the reserves to put out, that we didn't have to have an emergency tax levy to pay for the emergency, but that would have put a major impact on the future capital projects or operating of this borough. And through the efforts of Bob and Darren and applications to FEMA, we have been reimbursed, and we have a check that Bob can present to Ray to be deposited.
How much is about $390,000?
So thank you so much for your work. All right, Jeanne, if you can move a resolution?
I move resolution 248-2012.
Second. Discussion?
Mayor?
Yep, I have some comments. This resolution is for the hiring of a new police officer. This hiring is necessary for the police department's day-to-day operations and the safety of our residents. As you probably remember, I've been advocating for hiring an additional officer since earlier this year during our budget discussion. This additional officer, it's in our 2012 budget. I'm very pleased to see that the hiring is finally a reality after much delay. I thank the mayor, the council, and the administrators for all their support. This addition will bring the number of sworn officers for the department to 26. In addition to this hiring, the governing body had authorized the police department to initiate the posting and interviewing process for hiring another police officer in the near future. Again, I thank the mayor, council, and the administrators for their support, and hope that we will expedite the process this time for much-needed additional hiring. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Roll call vote?
Mrs. Tsukamoto.
Yes.
Dr. Esposito.
Yes.
Mr. Links. Mr. Catalonello.
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan.
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale.
Yes.
I have Stephanie Cararo, please step forward, and anyone in your family or friends that you want up here also, acting chief Darren Datchison, please step forward. Jeanne, you want to come up also? And repeat after me. I, Stephanie Cararo.
I, Stephanie Corel.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties of a patrol officer.
Perform all the duties of a patrol officer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
I further solemnly swear.
I further solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
In this state.
In this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Before we proceed.
Thank you. Thank you so much, thank you everyone.
And I need to teach you to side your own. Want to introduce your family?
Sure. This is my father, Robert Corel, this is my boyfriend, Daniel Chirino, my stepmother, Mela Corel, my grandmother, Kathy Corel, my brother, Kevin Corel, and his girlfriend, Pooja.
Resolution.
Mayor, I move resolution 255 through 258-2012.
Second. And discussion.
I would like to take this opportunity to thank the staff of the police department for their hard work every day around the clock to keep Madison safe. We look forward to formally filling the vacancies of the chief, two lieutenants, and two sergeants as soon as the police promotional ordinance is finalized. Thank you.
Further discussion? Just a, so it doesn't get missed, again, resolution 255 is the appointment of Sergeant Joseph Cirillo as acting lieutenant in the Madison Police Department, effective immediately. Resolution 256 is appointment of Sergeant Dennis Lamb as acting lieutenant, effective immediately. Resolution 257 is the appointment of Dennis Sean Plumstead as acting sergeant, effective immediately. Resolution 258 is the appointment of patrolman Craig Corelli as acting sergeant, effective immediately. Roll call vote?
Mrs. Tsukamoto.
Yes.
Dr. Esposito.
Yes.
Mr. Links. Mr. Catalonello.
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan.
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale.
Yes.
Welcome. They're probably gonna empty out, Mayor. All right, reports from committees? Public safety, Jeanne Tsukamoto?
Yes.
We'll let the, everyone file out. Somebody's gonna take a seat, please, he's gonna grab a seat.
Okay. As we all know, this is leaf season. The fire department asks that residents not park their cars on piles of leaves as this may start a fire. Also, do not pile leaves onto fire hydrants or cover storm catch basins when placing leaves in the street. Also from the fire department, firefighter Rob Dunn and Bruce Burials attended and completed a 20-hour rapid intervention rescue class this weekend at the county training facility. Can you hear me in the back?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
It's here, we have to keep the door open, so we'll have to try to, try to get them to keep quiet, but it is a great night for them.
The Madison Police Department responded to 1998 calls for service during the month of September. Madison officers responded to and investigated 37 motor vehicle crashes, issued 154 summonses, and made 19 arrests, including 10 narcotic arrests, five warrant arrests, three driving viol intoxicated arrests, and one shoplifting arrest. Madison officers also responded to 49 alarm activations and conducted 416 various premise checks. The department investigated 29 suspicious incidents, 19 suspicious motor vehicles, 12 suspicious persons, nine thefts, including three dorm room burglaries at Drew University, six disputes, and five property damage complaints. Commuters now have additional lighting at the commuter lot. I would like to take this opportunity to thank Electric Utilities Superintendent Michael Piano for responding very quickly to the request to improve commuter safety. Madison Housing Authority will finish the environmental cleanup work for the Strickland project in the Orchard Session this month. The project is scheduled to break ground immediately thereafter. The application process for these homes is underway. So far, over 100 families have attended the application orientation meeting, which is required step in the application process. There are very, very few potential applicants for Madison so far. These are three single-family homes, three-bedroom, one-car garage, by the Madison Housing Authority and Morris Habitat, to be sold for $185,000 to moderate-income qualified applicants with annual income about $64,000 to $83,000, depending on household size. I strongly encourage more eligible Madison residents to apply for these beautiful, energy-efficient homes in a great neighborhood. Please contact Morris Habitat by calling 973-891-1934 as soon as possible if you're interested. The Museum of Early Trades and Crafts is holding its annual benefit on November 2nd. The museum is honoring the Madison Rotary this year, so please come to have a good time and support the museum. The Madison PBA Local 92 is sponsoring a Thanksgiving food drive beginning today and ending Monday, November 19th. During this period, residents may drop off donations in the lobby of the police headquarters. The food collected will be donated to the Interfaith Food Pantry serving Morris County. Thank you.
Thank you. Utilities, Dr. Esposito.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The Electric Utility has installed three new poles and three new lights in parking lot three, which is the commuter lot, to address the commuter concerns, especially with the new spaces that we have designated in that area, so we can make it a better lighting situation, especially in the evening time when we get off the trains. The other thing, and I think I mentioned last time, the system experienced two different outages on October the 10th. The first outage was early Wednesday morning in the Pomeroy Road Eastern Woodland Road area due to a broken voltage, primary voltage cable. And the second was the entire western side of Madison lost power due to a loss of one main feeder line from Jersey Central Power and Light, which also cascaded and caused a problem with one of our substation circuit breakers that delayed the restoration of the power for a little while, but the men were on top of that. Jersey Central reacted quickly to our calls and took care of the problem, with very little problem. As a side note, this has nothing to do with the utilities, and pardon, if I may, Mayor, I had the anxiety-ridden pleasure of watching the Madison High School Varsity Football Dodgers on MSG Varsity this past Friday night. It was a nail-biter to the end in which the Dodgers triumphed, so congratulations to the Dodgers, now in their 31-game winning streak, which started back back on Thanksgiving Day 2009 with a win against Milburn. Again, congratulations to the team, and may they succeed this year again as they did the past two and three years. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for covering that, and if, at least to deliver back to the team, is we can only take one of those games a season, so, you know, we're here, we... Moving on to Public Works Engineering, Mr. Links.
Thank you, Mayor Conley. Public Works reports leave removal will commence today, October 22nd, 2012. Four crews of three men each will be deployed around town. The first crew will start at North Oakport and South Oakport, and will then proceed to Treadwell Avenue, Laurel Way, Nording Lane, Shady Lawn Drive, Lowen Takeaway, Rossport, Madison Avenue to the Morris Place area, and then Park Avenue to Ridgedale Avenue. The second crew will start at Kings Road, then proceed to the Mills Avenue area, then the Rosedale Avenue area, and then from Greenwood Avenue to Ridgedale Avenue. The third crew will begin with Land Road and Union Hill Road to Green Avenue, and everything on the right to Sampson Avenue, then Union Hill Road and Barnstead Avenue to Noe Avenue to Shunpike Road. Finally, the fourth crew will start at Green Village Road and clear everything on the right to the Orchard Street area, and then they proceed back to Green Village Road down to Kings Road. Then every street between Green Village Road from Green Avenue to the Prospect Street area. Leaf bags will be available to our residents at the Public Works Garage from 8:00 a.m. until 3:00 p.m., as well as here this evening. The Engineering Department reports that the Safe Routes to School Project will be bid next month and will be awarded before the last meeting this year. Work on PSENG's gas main replacement project is continuing. Candlewood Drive Pump Station will receive a new generator in roughly six weeks. The North Street and Candlewood Pump Stations are being evaluated for commuter equipment, and the West End Pump Station has a new deck. The Burnett 10-inch sanitary force main will receive new valves and cleaning over the next six weeks. The Madison Recreation Complex and the Field House Site is ready for final paving, and the Ridgedale entrance to the site will be made compliant with the JDP requirements. Main Street East, Semin Street will receive pavement resurfacing replacement signage and striping during the evening this week. Please refer to the municipal website for announcements about construction projects and the engineering website for additional details.
Thank you. Finance Borough Clerk, Mr. Cannell.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to thank Borough Administrator Cody and Assistant Borough Administrator Burnett for their hard work on the successful auction of borough property at 10 Maple. We have a resolution on it, we'll be discussing later in the day. The combination of funds received from that auction, as well as the funds received from FEMA, give us a nice head start next year for us to tackle the many outstanding capital projects that we have. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. Community Affairs, Mr. Landrigan.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a few things. This is the last week of the farmer's market, so take advantage of it. We have to wait till next summer for it again. This is Restaurant Week in Madison. It goes from, excuse me, my throat is going, from October 21st to October 28th. You can get more information on it at madisonnjchamber.org. Drew University hosts a lecture series. It starts this week, and at 8:00 p.m. on Thursday, Tom Brokaw will be speaking there. The DDC looks to promote the downtown, and they understand that some of the smaller businesses... These are tough times, they're trying to help them out. So what they're going to do is hold cash mobs, and what they want to do is, I guess you've seen them on TV where, you know, groups tweet to meet at a certain place and, you know, patronize a restaurant or shop or whatever. Well, they picked a store this week. It's going to be Wild Things. So on Friday, October 26th, between 1:00 and 7:00 p.m., they want everybody to hit Wild Things and buy something. You know, they have a nice selection of gifts and cards, and then right after that, they suggest you go to the firehouse for a slice or two of pizza. That works for me. And then the next cash mob is going to be at my house to pay for repairs I have to do. Okay. The Madison Arts and Cultural Events Society, MACA, is holding a fundraiser. This, tomorrow, they're going to be at Poor Herbie's. And the way it's going to work is, anybody who has dinner at Poor Herbie's between 6:00 and 10:00 p.m., 10% of the proceeds go to MACA, so if you're planning on going out to dinner tomorrow night, go to Poor Herbie's. It helps to support a good cause. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Health and Public Assistance, Ms. Vitale.
Thank you, Mayor. This is our report from Lisa Gula, who is our new health officer. On October 20th, they were at Morris Plains to hold a health and wellness fair. Morris Plains is one of our contract towns, and apparently it was very well-attended. Included in the fair were flu shots, cancer screenings, blood pressure screenings, lab work, and education that is given by our health educator, Christine Schessler. So that was very good. I'm looking forward to maybe, you know, having some of this go on here as well. Of course, we always have something going on from our Health Education and Municipal Alliance, Christine Schessler. As I report it, you could go on their website, their MASA website, or go through RoseNet and find out all of the events that are going to be happening in the next month or so. Lisa also reports through environmental health. The inspectors are all completing their retail food inspections for the year while only addressing only complaint, any complaints from residents. Complaints are beginning to shift from exterior issues to heating complaints now. So the reminder from Lisa is this. Heating season is from October 1st through May 1st. All rental premises should be maintained at a temperature of at least 68 degrees Fahrenheit between the hours of 6:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m., and the temperature of at least 65 degrees between the hours of 10:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m. So if that's not happening, or you know that it's not happening for one of your neighbors, please let the Health Department know. And our flu clinics are really nearing completion, so anybody that's interested really should get down to the Health Department and get their flu shot. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you. Communications and petitions?
None received, Mayor.
This is our first of two invitations for discussion. This one is limited to items on the agenda under the Agenda Discussions or Resolutions that are listed under the Consent Agenda. Please step up to lectern, state your name, your address, state the resolution number and the topic on it, or the agenda discussion you want to comment on, and keep your comments to three minutes or less. And just, we only have two Agenda Discussions today. That is the amend Chapter 75 Building Construction to Include Hours of Construction/Demolition and Community Garden Shed at the Madison Recreation Center. And just a heads up, as far as, as you know, we introduced a ordinance at the last meeting, repealing ordinance allowing RV parking at Public Works. That hearing is next, at our next meeting, and we'll have a, we'll have some more additional information related to the risk management exposure, along with space constraints on the yard. So with that, anyone wishing to comment?
Sheriff's Yellow Park, Army of Madison, just, can you explain that ordinance, 36, and just explain to me what it's all about? And then Resolution 251, just so, can you break it down?
So, 36, as we, as we come into the, it's a discussion item, so we'll make sure that is just covered. So we'll, we'll explain it as it comes up.
If you just got, then I can ask you a question.
It'll be, it'll have an introduction tonight, and then we'd have a hearing next meeting, so you could then share your input at that point.
How about the resolution?
Which resolution was 251?
Who's that? Jupiter Environmental Services.
That's withdrawn.
That's, um...
That's at the library asbestos abatement at the library. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting and move on to Agenda Discussions. Our first one is Building Construction for, or Building, yeah, Building Construction Include Hours of Construction/Demolition. This was Bob Landrigan and Carmella Vitale.
A while back, because of a lot of the construction going on in town, and I'll cite what's going on across the street from my house as the prime example, Realogy was fitting out their new headquarters. And it comes to pass that they were doing work late into the night, and when you looked at the Borough Code, as long as they kept it below a certain decibel level, they could work literally around the clock. On paper, that sounds good, but if you live in a nice, quiet neighborhood, even a dog barking at 10, 11 o'clock at night is bothersome. Carmella Vitale also, that was personal experience on my part. Carmella knows a lot of people in town, and she heard from a number of the residents that, you know, this noise can't continue. It was bothersome. You have children trying to study for school and whatnot. Looking forward, Realogy is still under work. They're still doing work there. In this past weekend, it was a Sunday morning at about 7:00 o'clock, they were moving earth. We have the new Walgreens going up, and soon we're going to be having GVR and possibly other construction work in town. So what we're looking to do is just make this consistent with what other towns have done. We don't want to put Madison in a less competitive position, but we just need to be fair to the residents in these areas. So, to make a long story short, we're saying that they can do work between 7:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. on weekdays. That's fairly, that's normal, you know, it's after you're up and before you go back to bed. And between the hours of 9:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. on Saturdays. Now, what we're stopping is doing construction work on Sundays. And no, no commercial work is allowed on Sunday, and no earthwork is allowed, I believe it's...
Weekends.
On weekends.
Right.
That's, and that's only for commercial, meaning if you have a private home and you want to do gardening, or have a landscaper come in and do work, go ahead, and you just have to abide by the normal ordinances for residents. This is commercial construction work, commercial earthwork.
And I think that's the most important point about this ordinance, that it deals with earthwork. It's the moving and the augering and the pounding of cement and whatever that's created some problems. A lot of our, a lot of our construction that's going on really is backed up almost to residential. I mean, there's stuff going on with Walgreens, and then further down at that new bank, and it's all close to residential areas, so we felt that this was very important because we did receive a lot of complaints. We're still hearing them from people who live over on Alexander with Walgreens because they're starting at 6:00 o'clock in the morning, and that's, that's difficult for families and babies. So we decided to put this forward.
I think, Bobby, you kind of mentioned about the leaf blows and all that, and if not only is this a law that would be consistent with neighboring towns, it's also, you know, we limit the use of landscaping equipment, but yet you could come in with a front-end loader and start digging your desire at 6:00 in the morning.
Exactly.
It sounds like a law overdue. Okay. Jeanie?
Yeah, Carmella, you made a comment that they're starting work at 6:00 a.m. That's just so early, and which actually violates our current ordinance.
Right, right.
Are we, are we doing anything about that so we can put a stop, immediate stop to that? Because they are violating, if you're in violation even right now.
I think Ray has been, Ray has been fielding all of those complaints, you know, and getting in, and I guess our construction officer is actually the one that has to go out and, you know, speak to it, so. I haven't heard anything in the last week or so, right? Is things better down there?
Well, enforcement of the noise code falls under the Board of Health, so they have to have the equipment calibrated, then, as Bob alluded, someone, you could work 24 hours a day if you're not above the noise levels, the decibel levels.
Someone actually has to go there with...
So we have to go and measure from the perimeter of the person's property to the site, and you have to discount the background noise, and then it has to exceed, and during the day it's higher. After evening hour and earlier, it's also a higher standard for the property owner, or for the, for the person doing the work to meet. So if we have a specific situation, we need the person to call the police desk. They, they're aware of the protocol to notify the Health Department. We then have to go out with the calibration equipment, take the finding, and then issue a summons if it's required.
Thank you.
Any other comments or discussion? All right, this is, as mentioned, this ordinance is listed for introduction, and any residents wishing to comment on it, the hearing will be at the next meeting. Community Garden Shed at the Madison Recreation Center.
I can talk a little bit about it in your package as a request from the Borough Engineer, just giving you notice that this would be a construction of a $4,500 garden shed at the Community Garden Site at the Madison Recreation Center Site. The funding is, comes from the authorization that you previously authorized to establish the community garden. They came in under budget, and now there's a need for, to store tools and equipment on-site. Right now, people bring their equipment back and forth. The shed would be located to where they're going to be expanding 12 additional plots to the right where the, as you walk in the main entrance, to the right, there's a few trees. That's going to be hopefully a future picnic area with some benches, and to the rear of that would be where the shed is located. They will do, the community garden volunteers will be doing the foundation and the stonework, and DPW will be assisting the placement, with the placement of the shed, which is a Quaker-style hut. I believe there's a photo in your package. So it's already been funded, you've already approved the funding for it, and it's something that seems to be needed at the site.
Questions or comments?
It is unclear from here what exactly that we need to do tonight, because there's, I don't think there's a resolution.
We don't actually need to, normally if it was, it's not a donation because we're actually paying for it, so you're, it's just, basically, it's a, almost like a form of courtesy review that you go out there and all of a sudden you see a shed and say, "I didn't know anything about it." It's just more from the engineer to let you know what's going on in advance of it coming. So there's no need for action.
Anyone comfortable with this?
As long as the committee is comfortable with it. I'm assuming that the committee reviewed this, and they're happy with it?
The committee reviewed it, it was submitted by Charles Courtney and Mr. Kelly on behalf of the committee, a consensus vote, yes.
All right. Very good. Ordinance is for hearing, there are none, since we didn't have enough time in between meetings, so, or anything that was introduced on October 10th will be, have a hearing on November 5th. Invitation for discussion, round two, so this is when you can comment on anything, not necessarily things limited to the agenda. But again, a reminder to state your name, your address, and keep your comments to three minutes or less. Is there anyone wishing to be heard? Carmen?
Carmen Pico, North Street, Madison. I was speaking with one of the business owners on Kings Road, and he wants to know if the DDC, the Downtown Development people, they come around every year asking for donations, but when it comes time for Christmas decorations and whatnot, they, they want to, he wants to make that area part of the town center. So I don't know what needs to be done, or anything can be done, but the businesses on Kings Road feel that they want to be represented a little bit better in Madison.
Bobby, you wanted to bring?
One of the things we're looking to do is expand the reach of the DDC. When we start developing the Green Village Road Site, many of the designs try to link in that part of town to the rest of downtown. There's an inherent problem with that road, is that the train trestle, which you can do little about, partitions it off from the rest of Main Street. I do know that, I'll be, we'll be working with the DDC in the upcoming months, and I'll bring that concern to them, especially as Christmas is coming, but it's a hard part of town to link in because of the physical location, but I'm happy to see that a lot of the potential GVR developers have considered that.
Okay, he was just a little concerned because every year they ask them for donations, but they don't ever seem to feel that they're part of the downtown.
Okay, I'll bring that up. I'll follow up a little. Thank you, Carmen.
Thank you, Carmen. Anyone else wish... Thank you, Carmen. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Sam?
James, this is Yellow Park Avenue, Madison. I talked to a lot of people who'll be in the liaison of the town. Thank you for that appointment, Bob. But a lot of people are wondering, why come meetings are no more on television, and who's responsible to make sure that they do get on television? I understand we had a deal with cable or something. Then also, they said, like, the meetings are always like a month, month and a half behind. Now, how does this get on television? Who's responsible for that? Because people enjoy the old times, especially watching meetings on television.
And you brought this up last time, and I know we reached out, did we get a...
I mean, it hasn't been off in the last three weeks.
No, we, we did speak to the school district. There was an issue with the server, Robert Copaz, who's filming us tonight, probably could give you a better example, because he actually was at the high school today. John Lapierre has been very responsive as the IT person for the school district, trying to straighten out that issue. But right now, it doesn't seem like what we upload to their system seems to be recorded. I don't know if Robert can shake his head and tell us what else is going on today, but is that basically, is it resolved, or still not resolved?
Well, there's a problem with getting the videos up onto the broadcast server, okay? The right now, John Lapierre is working on trying to resolve that. We used to basically have my computer being uploaded up to the district server, relating the schedule of the broadcast. And as right now, they don't have, sorry. Because right now, they don't have, I don't want to really get into that. All the meetings go on within four to five days after recording. The broadcast server that is up to the school district is scheduled on television. But right now, the October 10th meeting is not up, because I cannot connect to the broadcast server. I notified John Lapierre, Jim Sanderson, and Mr. Cody and everybody about that. So we're trying to get it fixed as quick as possible.
And as a reminder, there's a fallback also, which is not an answer for everyone, but you can watch it on the web. So go through our...
I'm using RoseNet and the links.
Yeah, I just talk about a lot of the old timers that I could just, you know.
Yep.
So see when you get on television. In the meantime, while you're talking about the DDC, how's the, like, again, I go to the post office every morning, and I don't know if you guys, there's a garbage thing there, there's been garbage there for the last three months. And they're talking about moving those newspaper things. Is that moving on, or...
Racks have been ordered.
They were supposed to, when you open your door, they park there. What's happening with that post office?
The racks have been ordered.
The racks have been ordered, so we are moving forward. Yep.
Then also, you know, we, we hired a police officer, which is nice, and I guess well-deserved. But how does the process work as far as the police, the chiefs and all that decide, or do we have a committee with the council? The point I'm getting at is there, you know, the whole day we have a lot of local, but I know there's a lot of local kids trying to get to be police officers. Do they have like an upper one point more, if everybody's equal, that hiring some local cops like the old days is, how's the process as far as hiring?
Stay tuned. At the next meeting, you'll, you'll see the ordinance that will be introduced in the next meeting, which covers everything from promotions to the hiring process. So a very good question.
You know, in the Madison Eagle, this past Thursday, talked about, you know, the Board of Health, I thought that is, is it paid for us to keep this Board of Health? I understand we lost three towns. Is that, is that true, or we had five, now we lost three, and it's costing us like a couple hundred thousand dollars just to run the, the health department. I'm thinking about doing something with the health department.
I think the only comment would be fair to say at this point is the directive that the council gave in the spring during the budget process, is that the, the level that the Board of Health's budget is right now, as far as reliance on Madison tax dollars, that cannot increase going into next year. So we would look at either new contracts, or a look at where they can save money. But we, we do not want to, we're not going to pass the burden on to Madison.
Just one more question, Bob.
I'll give you the reply.
Yeah, thank you. Oh, it's about a year or so ago, well, at the last two, three meetings ago, several weeks ago, there was a discussion about ordinances about the parking. I, I think I'm the only one in Madison that ever got a ticket for parking in a bicycle lane. And I had to pay $67 fine. And I went to the department over there, and there's no such ordinances parking in a bicycle lane, no statue, whatever it is. Matter of fact, somebody brought it up a couple, a few weeks ago. And I would like to know if there's also, can I get my money back? How, what's the process of getting my $67 back?
I, I...
Again, like I said, I'm the only one in Madison, and I park where hundreds of cars park there a week, across from Main Street subway. Maybe because I talk too much or something about it. I just got a ticket for parking a bicycle lane. And again, like I said, I think President of the council there should, should look into it, see if, like I said, I'd like to get my money back.
I, I, I think our attorney can opine on, now that you've paid the fine, I think the bus has left the station. But one of the tricky things on that location is the fact, since there's no curbs, what could have happened, and I have not seen the ticket, is you could, might have been on the actual sidewalk.
No, 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 Bob, no, no.
Yeah, I'm just, just, no. But I think if one...
I parked where a hundred cars park there a week, trucks, landscapers.
So, so am I correct that once you...
Well, it's, it's hard to say without seeing what the ticket was, but the, the best procedure would have been to plead not guilty and then go to municipal court.
Well, I, I just found out that there's no such statue as parking in a bicycle lane, because there's hundreds of cars parking in bicycle lanes. Landscapers park there 20 times a day.
I'm not aware of how much authority you, as the governing body, would even have, because it's a judicial matter. Because then you'd have everybody coming forward asking, "Well, I did this, I did that." The matter really belongs in the judicial branch of government, not the executive or legislative branch of government.
Oh, the liaison find out if I could get my money back somehow?
I, I can't, like the attorney say, I can't fix tickets.
Buy a raffle ticket.
Yeah, I, I, as you said, the, the car has left that parking spot, but...
Just bring the car back, that's all.
Yep. All right. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Seeing none, we'll move on to introduction of ordinances.
Ordinance is scheduled for first reading. Have a hearing set for November 5th, 2012. All will be published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the bulletin board, and made available to members of the public for questioning comments.
I call the ordinances for first reading, and ask the Borough Clerk to read said ordinances by title.
Ordinance 36, 2012. Ordinance of the Borough of Madison, amending Chapter 75 of the Borough Code entitled Building Construction to Establish Hours for Construction and Demolition Act.
Second. Further discussion beyond the...
Yeah. Under, this is page one, section two, second paragraph. This paragraph talks about that the uniformed construction code official of the Borough of Madison has the authority to extend the hours after determination that the public health, safety, and welfare will not be impaired by the, by the construction activities. I would like to add, with the consent of the business administrator, the Borough Administrator. So that way, the administrator will be part of the, the decision-making process. And then it continues on to say then that there is sufficient juris justification for a waiver.
Yeah, let me just jump in there. I hear what you're saying. I really, I mean, I'll defer to Ray, but I don't know if that really adds any added value to the process. You already have the police department who would be advised of any noise complaints. The zoning officer is the uniformed construction person who would actually issue the waiver. Beyond that, I'm not sure, you know, bumping it up to Ray or Jim is going to add anything.
Right. The intent here, it's not, it's not to get Ray to authorize that, but to keep Ray in the loop of the entire process.
I'll defer to Ray. If he wants to know about each individual...
This is a question for...
Chad, sorry, he'll get the phone calls.
Yeah, I'm gonna...
So I, I, I see some reason for, for that. I, I...
Why don't we provide a notice provision, and just say, after he makes the decision that Jim and I are notified within X hours, or 12 hours, or 24 hours?
Whichever way that...
Is that... I, I think a notice provision would be more appropriate than giving you the authority, because the construction official really has, that's his zone of authority. And they're quasi, you know, statutory officials with different responsibilities.
That sounds good, if it's okay with you, Ray.
Oh, it's fine. My, my wife doesn't even let me use a hammer, so that would be, so it's be preferred.
So it'd just be adding language of communication.
So Bruce, that's not going to make a difference in this, then it's not...
Well, you haven't moved it in yet, so...
Yeah, I know, but like, yeah.
If the council president wants to move to amend...
Right.
The second paragraph of section two to provide a notice provision, could move that and vote on that, and then you could vote to introduce it with the amendment.
Okay.
So before we go to Rob's comment?
I don't want me to split hairs on some of the hours, but if we wanted, if, if we introduce it as is, and then is it still possible to change the, some of the times that the, that work is allowed in the next go-round of discussion, or do we have to to, to, to read that in now? So for example, if we say 7 to 6, you know, we hear back, "Oh, I want to do 7 to 7," or extend the hours on a Saturday, how does that work?
It's possible to change at the public hearing, but because that really goes to the heart of the ordinance, that's a substantive change, so it would have to be reintroduced as a first reading. So it would push the cycle back, adoption of the final ordinance at another meeting.
Yeah. The way this is worded is, it does give some discretion to the zoning officer, so if somebody wanted to go beyond those hours, it's appropriate. When we put this together, we looked at other towns, and we went actually a little beyond what they were doing to give more flexibility. We're just trying to mix these hours in with what the typical resident may or may not want to do. But there is some wiggle room in there that the zoning official can provide.
And I think what is important is, it is fairly consistent with neighboring towns.
Right.
Right.
So obviously, someone that does construction in Madison most likely does in neighboring towns.
Yeah.
So it's not a drastic difference, and so it's like, you know, why am I going to work in Madison, or hours are restrictive? This is consistent.
Yeah.
And the research was done about 15 municipalities, all in this area. So this is generally what everybody is saying.
All right. So Jeanie, you want a motion on the amendment?
Yep. Move to include the additional paragraph regarding notice to the Borough Administrators.
Second. Discussion. We'll call a vote.
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Lynx?
Uh...
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
And now we'll call a vote on the ordinance introduction.
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Lynx?
Uh...
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Consent agenda resolutions.
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by certification of availability applied. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full minutes.
I move consent agenda resolutions R249-2012 through R254-2012, and R259-2012 through R261-2012.
Second.
Do we need to read one into the rec, do we need to read 261?
We can do it. We posted it, but we can read it. Sure. Resolution 260 is a resolution entitled, if it's okay, Liz, all right? Okay. Resolution of the Borough of Madison accepting an in-kind donation from the Madison Athletic Foundation for a Wall of Fame at the Madison Recreation Center. Whereas the Madison Athletic Foundation, MAF, has generously offered to build and donate a Wall of Fame at the Madison Recreation Center to the Borough, and whereas the Borough Council has concluded that would be in the best interest of the Borough to authorize the work and accept the donation, now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the Borough of Madison and the County of Morris, State of New Jersey, that the Borough accepts the donation of the above-described Wall of Fame and authorize the Borough Engineer to work with representatives of the MAF on the project. And be it further resolved that the Borough of Madison expresses its gratitude to the Madison Athletic Foundation for their continued generosity and fundraising efforts. Adopted and approved, October 22nd, 2012.
And, uh, 261?
That's 260.
261.
261 is the, the GVR posted, okay. Yeah, posted. And that's posted also.
Both, both of those are posted, just, I see in the audience, representatives of Quindianos Unite, you know it, Unites, Quindianos for Columbia. I took, I took five years of Spanish.
I can say it, Doug.
I think I'd be able to say this, but I apologize. But, so this, we have a resolution that it authorizes a health fair at Madison Civic Center, so I just want to thank you for your effort to reach out to the community on that. The resolution, R61, which is related to Green Village Road School, in agreement with the Board of Education, probably read the releases related to that, and I just want to thank the council and the Board of Education. As noted, I don't think any Board of Education and council in the state work so closely together in a great effort to, on redevelopment, and it's in the best interest of all of Madison. So I want to thank everyone. Any other comments?
Rob? On Resolution 251, what is the source of funds?
251?
Is that in the...
That was, so we approved the ordinance...
Way earlier in the year, just so it's coming.
Yep, yep.
Ordinance six, right?
Yep.
Ordinance number six, 2012.
Yeah, yep. Any other discussion? We'll call a vote.
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Lynx?
Uh...
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
We have no unfinished business? Approval of vouchers?
Public safety, $23,246.04. Health and public assistance, $2,299.79. Public Works and Engineering, $154,897.98. Finance and Borough Clerk, $85,441.33. And Utilities, $1,373,561.55. Total is $1,639,446.69.
Mayor, I move the vouchers for approval.
Second. Okay. Discussion? Vote?
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Lynx?
Hello.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
We have no new business?
Okay, move to adjourn.
That's a record. You should come every meeting, Bruce.
We're going to talk about that.
He's fired. He's out.
Yep.
Mayor, nice to meet you.
Take care.
No, no problem. Ray, good to see you. Nice meeting you. I can't, or seeing you.
Yeah, nice to meet you.